I attended a Freedom of Information workshop last Friday and pass a couple of these down. And I became even more aware of the importance of transparency in our government and the ability to get information that we need on things like land or things that are going on at Florida that or whatever the case is. So the the Freedom of the Freedom of Information Act and how it was created, it's fascinating. I encourage those to look it up. And we handle these properly professionally in the office for all those things that fall into into the purview of this this issue. But this little pamphlet is helpful in terms of what's covered, what isn't, how it's handled. But again, it gives me even more confidence in and how this works to again maintain transparency in governments, both big and small. So I thought that was very, very helpful. Again, I encourage people to pursue or look that up, or if they need some information about the town they're unsure about, explore whether or not that's available. And if it isn't, or they think it's available, that is an avenue that they can pursue. That is all right for my correspondence. Next public comment. Does anyone have anything they want to say tonight?
All right. Good evening, anyone, everyone. Kelly Mullen, fifty-four Strong Zav. And this is just a follow-up question. We were just wondering if we had an update about our proposal that we put in for the law at the end of Brazil's drive last meeting.
So nothing yet. I have received it. It'll be, we didn't put it as a discussion item on here, but it raises a bigger question, which I'm glad about, is what do we do with with town land that we have? So I think what we need to do, and again, the board may change in a couple of weeks. So I was going to put it into the next board, whoever's chosen, because we need to not only do that and see what's the policy, the town, what's the rates that we would charge, what's the use of it, what are the rules about that? It kind of opened up a bigger can of worms in a good way. So it hasn't been forgotten. In fact, it's tripped a lot of other discussion about how we do it the right way. I believe that your families have had discussions and talk. That's great. But I think there's something more we could do. So as a board, for those of you that will be here in a couple of weeks, for those of you that may not and still want to pay attention, I think finding a good use for town land that is being unused right now, and we can find another use for it in a way that makes sense. And what the least value is, is something that we should look at in the same way that we had talked about looking at the charter and looking at some ordinances when it comes to supply. So there's other things that we need to look at systematically. So that's one of them. So no decision's been made yet because we haven't had a full discussion. That'll be coming soon, but that is.
I know there's a lot of other things, probably more important things on the table, but.
But but fairness, it is an important thing. And I think it, for me, I've had a number of conversations with you guys, with the other family and with others in town that have seen the discussion about this. And I think it's it's well worth having and and seeing what we want to do. The fact that our plan of conservation and development is happening right now, we're looking at what we want to do for the next ten years, like when our town grows up, right? What do we want to be in ten years? That's part of it. So I think there's a lot of brain power going to be put into this to come up with something that makes sense. Maybe easy to implement, but something that makes sense for everyone involved. So I think we can get there. But we need to have the power, I need to have the the other folks on this board, I'll be able to look at that and with feedback from everyone, come to a decision on that. So so it is hot, it's active, and it'll be looked at soon. That I could promise you.
Thank you.
With that, is there any any feedback from the board members on on that discussion?
Is that, are we doing that now?
Are we?
Because we're not.
It's not.
It's even that whole, that was more than we typically do in public comment. Just listen, then open to other people's thoughts.
That's, we can, we can talk when it comes to.
Terms up, you're a hundred percent correct too.
All right. All right. Any more public comment?
Kim Hannah, Butler Lane, Portland. I'm here with an issue. Mike knows that we've had this on our street for quite a while now. It's a boondoggle on Butler Lane. Last year, we received a letter that for twenty minutes at the end of the school year, the gate would be open because there was congestion on the high school driveway. And that morphed from twenty to thirty to an hour or so, but it was just in the afternoon. I brought up some security concerns then. I brought up some problems. There's a lot of kids that walk to school and it's a narrow road and young drivers are young drivers. We've all had them. And I was concerned about the pedestrians and I got poo-pooed on that. So this year was no notification. They've decided to open the gate from six thirty in the morning until whenever they decide to close it. And it's a very confusing situation. Now it's a two-way road and it's people going in and out at the same time. And if you see in the pictures, I don't know whose responsibility that corner is, whether it's on the town side or the property owner's side, but you can't see going around that corner. So cars are going in and cars are going out at the same time. And people can't see what's going on. There's tremendously less cars this year than there were last year. There is no congestion at the high school driveway. I sat there the other day. I didn't have my camera. There's two or three cars behind the buses. The buses are out in down High Street before the kids are leaving the parking lot. So there's no congestion. It's also confusing because it's a dead-end road. If you look at the town maps, it's a dead-end road. It's emergency access. So all week long, you can go in and out at will. But then come Saturday or Sunday, people still think it's open and they're zooming down the road and now they're aggravated because whatever they're trying to get to on time, they're late and they're zipping around and zooming back down the road. So I think it really is something that needs to be addressed from a safety standpoint. I also will go back to construction of the middle school complex up there because when that was done, there was a traffic study done on High Street. That intersection was deemed a very dangerous intersection. There's no sight lines. You're coming over a hill. It's a, you know, you've just got the in and out. When you're leaving the high school through the high school driveway, you've got a right-hand turn lane, a left-hand turn lane, and it's a scree way stop. You've got young drivers leaving there. They're they're, they know. I mean, they're kids. We all know how they are. They don't see that car racing over the hill. They're going now onto a road that's in terrible shape on top of it right now. And I still think it's it's an extreme safety concern. And I think it puts the town kind of in a liability position because it's been designated a dangerous intersection. And yet buses are going out of there, school vans are going out of there with students on them, kids are going out of there. And I don't know what the rules are now in school because I haven't had kids in school for a long time, but traffic during the day up and down is pretty constant and not all of them are adults. So I don't know if now kids can come and go during study halls or whatever, but it's a nice little getaway road. I've also now seen more people and it doesn't bother me, but I know that you really shouldn't have a lot of traffic on school grounds that doesn't belong there. And yet now people can go up and park and walk the track during the day. You know, it's just supposes what you consider safety. Now you've got an open driveway that nobody monitors. And who knows what's going, who's going in that property? But I, but my biggest concern, you've got a lot of traffic going in and out through that narrow opening. It's it's a bad intersection for these kids to be leaving from. And it's been fine for twenty-five years or whatever. And there are probably a third of the cars in the student parking lot this year compared to last year. So I don't see the congestion that they're relying on. I would, I, Mike knows I brought these concerns to him before. I've brought him to the school and then last year when I was degraded and threatened by the SRO, I stopped bringing it to the school. I just said, this is, I'm not going to be treated like that. So but I think it's something that is a town issue also because you're liable if something happens, regardless of whether it's a school decision, it's going to come back to you guys. So it's something you at least need to look at and make a decision on. And, you know, like I said, the twenty minutes morphed and morphed and now it's six thirty in the morning till God knows what time, sometimes three, sometimes six, sometimes eight at night and you know, after dark coming around that corner is no good. And we're not mean. That's cool. That that road for special events, these kids have special events. It's wonderful. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. We, you know, we invite people graduation and stuff, park in our driveway, we shuttle grandparents up. We don't care about that, special occasions, but for everyday traffic, I think there's some big safety issues going on there. So and I just, those are, you know, those are just, it's confusing. You've got a sign over the street sign that says no outlet. You've got a sign that says no through street and yet it's a through street. So I don't know what people are supposed to make of that. And it is a dead-end road if you look at the town map. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim, what's an SRO?
Right. Anybody else?
Wait a minute, I'm not, I have a question too. So the school resource officer sort of told you to go fly a kite?
Yeah. If I didn't understand what he was going to do, he didn't find it for me. And if I contacted them again, they would press drive and go to red. So it's, it's up.
Sounds harsh. Yeah.
How long ago was this, Kim?
That's not nice.
Thank you for that, Kim. And again, we've been talking for nine months.
Was this decision made by the schools on their own or was there conversation?
We didn't talk about it. No, we didn't know. The first I've heard of it.
By this letter, it looks like it was Kate Lawson that made the decision.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at the photos and the bars across the road are a big issue, the big proof right there anyway, but it says school emergency access only. And as Kim said, the town map shows that as a cul-de-sac. I I would hope that there was some conversation amongst someone other than high school principal when this decision was made.
There was, there was discussion with not only Kate Lawson, but also Bob and the SRO. And they're concerned about safety entering and leaving the school. So they did have extensive discussion. I know it's not the outcome that was hoped for there. And the intention, I believe, when they started the the school season was only as they needed in the morning at night because one-way traffic through that way would have, in their opinion, been safer. But Bob and Kate and the SRO, the SRO officer, that was their initial concern, but there has been times, multiple times when the gates have been left open after the morning time. It hasn't been the twenty minutes or half an hour in the morning with the initial intent. So there is some concerns and there's some legitimate understanding.
Well, I think what John's asking now is, yeah, this was all internal by the school, not anything to do with the Board of Selectmen, Public Works.
It's a, yeah.
It was strictly the school says, hey, this is what we're going to.
School.
Has a parking lot, but that is a town road.
Right.
And and I think for that reason alone, the conversation should have been mutual parties involved, the schools, the town crew and and anybody because they're they're driving those folks to a town road.
Plus, if you're dangerous, if you have an intersection that was designated as a dangerous intersection back when the when the studies were done, right? And that designation has been nothing that we would be made aware of at this point that has been done to remediate that, then we certainly don't want to be directing traffic towards that intersection. Right? If that's going to become something that can used on a regular basis, part of any study to do that would mean we'd have to improve the safety around that intersection.
Right. I think it opens up to liability.
But I think also like Kim was saying, it's not the fact of them using it in the morning and in the afternoon. It's that they don't abide by their own recommendation of the timeframe.
Right.
You know, if you open it at two fifteen and close it at two forty-five, at the end of school, that's different. Yeah.
I understand. But part of it also is for events as well. So there are some legitimate reasons. They have events going on there, special events.
It's always been the agreement.
Of course, of course. So so at a minimum, there's there's gray area. I think there's very legitimate concerns about the traffic for the people that are there. I think there's legitimate concerns about about safety. I don't think they were trying to do anything other than what they thought was safer. I don't think their job is to is to try to annoy the neighbors there. I don't think that's the intention at all. It may feel that way, but it's certainly from all the discussion I've had.
But yeah, but that, right, he shouldn't threaten her and should they have written this letter in the first place without checking with the town? Like the town administration, because it's a town road. You know, it's almost like, to me, the principals overstepped their ground bounds.
Yeah, this letter should come from the town, not.
Right.
They shouldn't be addressing the residents of the road.
Right. And I don't know, to be, to be fair, I don't know if this was discussed with the previous for selectmen or not. I don't know.
I don't know.
So so until I know that for sure, so I, what I will do if if it pleases the board is I will find out more details about the whole thing as well as some background, but I think it is worth the discussion at our next meeting with the meeting after to to work this thing through. It's, again, I've heard a great deal about this over the last bunch of months and it's it's a long-term issue that's happened there. And I need to try to balance that against against legitimate safety things. I don't think anyone would happen to that. So right. Of course. Yes. Those kids need to walk more anyways. Get their steps in. So I don't know if we need to do a motion on this other than I think we need to add this as an item.
I don't think we need, I don't think we need a motion because it was still, right, right. But I do think it's, I appreciate you are going to take and get some additional information.
And just for the record, so so that everyone watching is clear, this has been going on for a while. This letter is dated September tenth, twenty twenty-four. So, you know, maybe it's just gotten loosey-goosey and things have gotten worse. So you're right, this may have been something that was agreed upon with the previous administration.
I'm just surprised it's being brought to us now.
We haven't heard of it sooner, frankly.
No, I understood. Oh, yeah, certainly.
So.
That's where it belongs.
It's quite all right. Quite all right. That's how it should be. All right. Any more public comments? All right. Next, the monthly budget report. Tom is unavailable unfortunately tonight. He will not be able to make it here. I will, I will have him come to the next meeting and he'll be able to present the budget at that time. I'll make the amendment to to that budget or to that agenda for that, for that meeting. So next, appointments of boards and commissions.
We have one for tonight. Sandy Castelli for the senior advisory board.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion.
Well, I'm going to say to, because we had appointed Michelle Don Hugh to that previously and fortunately, through an oversight with communication, Michelle didn't know that those meetings were at eleven o'clock in the morning. She thought they were in the afternoons. And as a, as a result, she was unable to serve on that. So she declined the the appointment. And that's why we have another individual now. Sandy Castelli would be fabulous at that group.
I second it because I've worked with Sandy on many boards. Sandy and her, her husband were, was a great guy. And I think she'll add a lot to that board. So I I'm in agreement with that.
Right. Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes. Fantastic. Any other appointments of boards and commissions? That's it? All right. Refunds of excess payments. Bobby?
I'll make a motion for a refund of excess payment for Portland Boat Works Marina LLC, one hundred eighty-seven dollars, sixty-two cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Troy T. Levine, one hundred forty dollars, eighty-eight cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes.
Motion for a refund of excess payment to C C A P Auto Lease Limited, three hundred and thirty dollars, twenty-eight cents.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, A T A R Leasing Limited, four hundred and ten dollars, ninety-five cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes. All right. Status reports. We'll start from my left. Anything down the sink?
So we're gearing up for the next round of meetings, but I'd say just from the water and sewer side of things, first, want to extend a thanks to to our Water and Sewer, Public Works folks. They've been working hard now for a couple of days, some tough days, trying to get the the challenges with the backup at the at the high school resolved. And the last update that I had gotten was I believe they were having a little bit of a power issue as well at another station. So there's a lot going on. And they're working hard. So thank you. That's hours and hours. And thank you to that team for what they're doing. And then I think the other thing that's worthwhile is that Mike and I went up to to the M D C, to the Water Board meeting and basically just had, you know, basically the public comment, we had made our conversations, basically made our notes regarding, you know, our thoughts on this. This meeting is, it's kind of weird. They do not, even though it's a negotiation that we're in with them, when they're speaking to the Water Board, we're not allowed to speak. We can only speak during public comment. So we did, we did listen to that. There's going to be some follow-up with the M D C in in terms of, right now, they're so they're holding tight to the fact that they want one of those two options, which would be either we buy more water or we give up our safe yield. We have explained that we, you know, cannot, will not, at this point, agree to lower the safe yield.
Jim, for the record.
Yes.
Can you just explain the, what safe yield is?
Sure. Well, right now, we have a diversion permit. We have a guarantee of up to one point one million gallons a day. That's that's agreed so that we can get that. And we occasionally hit that number. We also have in that agreement up to two million gallons instantaneous, right? And instantaneous draw. The one point one million gallon, when we have our peak usage, that's kind of the number that we get to. So we need to have that in place to have that available. The challenge is until the new well's online, we need to have that full capacity. As we look to extend the contract, what they're saying to us is that, and by the way, if we were to let that safe yield go, there was a lot of political pushback thirty years ago from the Farmington River watershed and some of the environmental groups in that area about getting the water from the Farmington River watershed and basically making it available for sale as far east as Portland. So we know that if that, if we let that safe yield go to a degree to reduce that, that the diversion permit at this point, and then we had some sort of a hiccup with the well or a delay or anything like that and needed to have that safe yield back, we wouldn't get it. It just would be, the challenges there would be, would be, be very difficult to overcome. So we've made that clear. So their only other option that they're agreeing to is that we buy more water. They've gone from their initial request was that we buy an additional two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. More water right now, we buy four hundred. They wanted us to go to six fifty. That would have brought our annual, that would have increased our annual cost about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. Or in other terms, it would have been a twenty-seven percent increase. That's been a non-starter. They're holding right now at a two hundred thousand gallon a year increase, which would be about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year of additional water we would have to buy. So obviously, again, we'd be looking at, you know, a twenty-one, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two, that's back of the napkin. I haven't calculated it, percent increase. So obviously, that's, that's also a non-starter with us. So so we are not in agreement with the terms that they're offering. We're asking for a status quo. We've got a thirty-year contract where we buy a hundred and forty-six million gallons a year. We're asking basically to continue that for another two years with two additional optional years. We're asking basically to continue that for another two years with two additional optional years. That is, uh we feel a good option for them because it gives them budget predictability for the next two years on what they're gonna sell. Um but that's where the disagreement lies. Anything you feel we should add or?
No, we're uh, we have another meeting scheduled for this coming Tuesday, ten of them to uh to follow up uh with the smaller committee. Um we were getting a lot of headwinds on a number of ways with them. Uh but they're following what Portland does very closely, so they watch the meeting notes. They see what's happening here.
I do wanna, actually, you know what, can I add? Because I think this is actually important. One of the things that they are trying to do, um and one of the reasons that they're trying to establish this I with us, and they they actually have said this, there's two things that they kind of have um brought out. One, if they can require us to buy more water, then they can lower the rate for all their other members, right, for for all the members. So we end up as a municipality buying another two hundred thousand gallons a day, but that really, you know, reduces everybody else's costs like, you know, one to two cents or whatever, it was some uh some small amount. Um and I think that part of this is that they've also said that this is part of their go-forward strategy. So one of the concerns that we have is that other municipalities that have, you know, tertiary type agreements, are they gonna try to push those types of agreements, uh non-member towns, into the same type of things where they try to force them to buy all of this same yield? So there's a lot of different issues at work here in terms of what they're trying to do um going forward, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of interplay. So it's it's gonna be um, we it's it's we're gonna have to keep fighting it out.
It's precedent setting.
It's precedent setting, and we want to be very careful to and make sure to try to handle this uh appropriately.
And and you put that to the backdrop of we probably have two to three years before well that we have right now that just had a seven-day test is actually plugged in, hooked up and producing water for the town. So it's the transition time, but the goal, I think, now now that we've gone down the road and last year, about a year ago, the town voted on a referendum to approve the water or approve the money for this project, uh the town wants it, we want it. Ultimately, it will stabilize our prices and allow us to take some of the money that we would have spent on M D C water as their prices have gone up and invest into our system since we control and own our sewer and water. So it's all things that will make us more self-sufficient, make us a better town, allow us to grow more, and perhaps expand it to places where there isn't water now. So there's there's many good things that this could do for the town, but we've got to get through the next two, three years. So we're just, we're working hard to get that done and uh we uh, I'm looking forward to the meeting with M D C on Tuesday also, uh to uh to continue that conversation. So.
Ask Jim a question? On the water? How much water are we gonna need from them once our new well gets online?
Um that's, that's a a good question. The bottom line is that right now our average demand is about six hundred and eighty thousand gallons a day. Okay, that's our average. Um when our, when our um if we're sitting in the summer and people are watering lawns and, you know, basically water's in full, we can peak at about one point one million gallons. Our current well that we have now is very stable at three fifty, um but can go up to about five hundred thousand gallons a day. Okay, problem is it's sixty-two foot, you know, uh you know, gravel well. It's not uh we we it is subject to if you have a drought, but it's something we have to monitor, okay? This well that we were, we were actually testing it, one of the reasons it took an extra couple of weeks to run the test is we put a bigger pump in. When we ran the test in the spring for forty-eight hours, we tested it at one point four million gallons a day or one point four four. We actually tested it right now to one point nine million gallons a day. So if everything is in and running um on a steady state, right, sunny sunny day scenario, everything's up and running, nothing's under maintenance, we would be fully capable of supplying all of our water needs.
And you mentioned that the town well that we currently have is a gravel well and relatively shallow.
Yeah.
The new well, do you just explain how deep it is?
Uh yeah, the the new well is actually three, three hundred and thirty feet down. Um and what's, when you look at the geology, one of the reasons that G S A, right, the hydrologists that we've worked with and one of the recommendations and things that when we did the core sampling, is that when we go down, we're actually going down through two thick clay layers, which basically provide a barrier which help protect that water course. So we're we're down, it's it's uh the initial testing on the water is effectively near perfect. Um the only the only thing is I think that the initial is slightly hard. And when I say slightly hard, it's borderline as to whether or not we'd have to treat it. Um so it's, right now, it's good quality water. It's in scale. But we're obviously, we're waiting for the test results to come back from the, you know, the the longer pump test. And, you know, we don't have all of that data yet. We've got to get that. And we've got to get all the data and look at the modeling of how everything worked with all the monitoring wells around. Uh we know the report was on the forty-eight hour, we didn't see any impacts at uh when we ran at one point four four million, which would meet our current needs. But we need to see exactly what the monitoring wells are around, around this well, um what those results all look like. And when they then uh sort of um balance everything out based on rainfalls or lack of rainfalls and all that, they need to look at what the model looks like based on those to see, to give us a final number to prove the well in.
Yeah, I'll add two things to that. One is, um we'll, we'll always have a connection with M D C in terms of a tertiary as a backup because we need that. Um that's just, they're gonna be smart for us to do. We Berlin has that, a number of other towns do that with M D C. Um but we also have a lot of infra- infrastructure to fix up and we've had over the last two, three months, we've had two breaks on a water mine on High Street that are old pipes that we're in the process of replacing, so we're replacing at just the time. Uh but that will give us more funding, opportunity to replace more and get more of an infrastructure in place to uh be able to, again, expand what we have, so.
Yeah, and and you're right, that that's always been the plan is that we would maintain right, and and you know, Rick, Rick, because Rick served on the Water and Source Subcommittee for several years, we were working on these issues, but that's always been the plan is to have um a tertiary connection, right? But in terms of what we would need to draw, um it would really be an emergency type or a connection when we're shut down doing maintenance, um that we would have to have to use it.
Have have we discussed with M D C what that might cost us to have that tertiary?
We we haven't directly, but we have other agreements from other other municipalities that we can model that from. And and we we have taken a look at those. Because there's a number of those. Um that's again why this issue that we're having now and these negotiations that we're having now are important.
Thank you, Jim.
And Jim, just to the issue of hardness with the new water, because I had a conversation kind of with somebody who questioned uh the impact on the home uh pipes for folk. That my understanding is that that if there were treatment necessary for that water from the new well, that would occur before it got into the pipes going to the homes, right?
Absolutely, that's that's what I'm saying. So I think the the hardness number that we had gotten before was one twenty, which is sort of, it's slightly, but it's it's really not it's not, you know, not really an issue. Uh but when we get the final testing and then we get the better numbers, if, you know, if we end up treating for hardness, and I make the assumption that we will, we would do it right at the pump facility itself.
Right, okay.
So the water that's going out of there and going to Portland homes would be treated when it gets there. That's, we would, we would basically do the sanitization, which we do already with our existing well, we would do the sanitization, we would do the treatment behind us.
It's a relatively easy treatment.
Relat- relatively, yeah, that's the other side of it, of the different conditions you can have. That's a pretty simple one to take care of.
Uh Portland is also blessed with a good water supply. Um there's other wells, different parts of Portland that had been drilled by other companies or whatever. Um so we have a good aqua for below us, so. Uh we have also the potential to expand and maybe add another one if we had to. So. So yeah, and again, where the well is right now is where the Connecticut River used to go. So I guess that was the original path.
Yeah, the every, if you, yeah, if you look at it, I think that, if I understand correctly, it's when you, when the river was diverted, when we had the glaciation, it came down through there.
History lesson, right, geology. All right, great. Any any other updates?
I think, well, probably the only other thing would be, would be, again, from the um um, from a parts and rec perspective, uh they had a great, they great event for the Portland Five K. Um I think they had a hundred and seventy-five, you know, they're basically just shy of a hundred and eighty uh people. It was a great day. People were having, people were having a lot of fun. So it was, it was a really good event down at the riverfront. Um so kudos to them for that, for that work. And for all the people that ran and watched, I observed, but but for all the people that ran and watched. I was, I was one of the first people watching, watching.
All right, you all set?
I am all set, thank you.
I'll make it quick and easy. The first item Jim talked about was a sewer backup at the high school and my meeting last night with Board of Ed was postponed because of that issue with the, well, with the water, so I'm done.
River, while the Five K race was going on, the River Access Committee was participating in the Connecticut River Conservancy Source to Sea Cleanup, and we had twenty-five people show up um at the New River Access Site and Rose Letta um got us into the Meriden Boat Works where we had easier access to our property. We were able to drive a pickup truck down there. Um we filled up the pickup truck with trash and we tied three old canoes to the back of the truck, filled them up with trash and dragged them up um Airline Avenue to the old ball field where we had a dumpster that the Connecticut River Conservancy um donated to us. So we basically filled the dumpster with trash and um there's still a little more stuff from an old campsite down there, old window frames and some glass, but we've got a lot of, a lot of that area cleaned up of of litter and trash. I mean, there's a lot of dead trees and limbs and stuff, more work to be done, but it was a good effort, good volunteer effort. And so I'm thankful for everybody that showed up. And this Saturday at eleven o'clock, no, ten o'clock, ten o'clock, October eleventh, um Lupe, the committee chairman's organized a groundbreaking ceremony. I know Mike's gonna be there. Um the selectmen are invited. Um anybody in town's invited um just a little commemoration that we're gonna kick off construction and we'll probably, if if anybody wants to, we'll take them for a walk down through the property, which is still a bit of a jungle, but um the good news is construction's gonna start this fall and we'll probably have uh river access by the spring.
Maybe soon.
I could just say I I helped do the cleanup, but um I, the the beach area is gorgeous down there. You're on the beach side, so it's very shallow for watching. But if anybody wants an idea of where it is, when you're standing on the beach and looking across the river, directly across is an area that's where the railing is for Harvard Park and Middletown, just north of the restaurant. That's kind of where we're across. So if you're looking at Meriden Yacht Club going down the river, just before it bends, that's the area, but it's uh, it's the view from there is absolutely gorgeous.
It's also nice, by the way, that it's in an existing no-way zone, so you don't have to worry.
Yeah, it's um, it really can, we'll, we'll become more than just a canoe and kayak launch because I mean, you can wade around there, you could fish, you can walk it. It's like a beach. It's it's sort of hard-packed silt. But um the river's shallow this time of year, you can wade right into the water and not fear a current. So it should be nice.
It's a beautiful spot.
Yeah, it's a great spot. Can't wait.
Uh I just have the, I attended the library board of directors meeting on um September eighteenth. And they went through some policies that they approved and um and we had talked about one of the policies to do with um how, when they fill events, um whether Portland um folks are given priority for that. And and I think they came up with language that was very appropriate. It's gonna address it and, you know, keep that. And and as the technology advances, they could do more with that.
Right.
Um the other thing they, and I don't know how many people did this or not, but the the chair, the the chair situation for our meetings here, and I don't know if they, did any, anybody go down and check out the chair?
I I test sat the chair.
Did you test it?
Yes.
Yes, did you give the?
I I gave it to the, I was hoping everybody else had a chance to do that.
Oh, I didn't. Yeah, so well, I'm not gonna be here that much.
That's why they gave us the orange ones, so I try.
So, so we'll see, I, we'll get an update on that. I just.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And that was it. Uh, nothing.
Mike?
Nothing.
Good to see you. All right, um I have few things. Um but first, a question for the board. It came up earlier today. I haven't put it on the agenda, but I will on the next one, but uh now that the school, now that the Strategic Capital Improvement Committee has done the work and passed in the report, um we'll need to disband that um and then go on to the next step. So I know last year uh we ended up making a motion to span the previous committee that we put together. So uh we won't do it today, but uh that, I think in the next one, um is the next step with that. We proceed to report and whatever, whoever the next board is made up of, we'll have to field that.
In terms of that, that committee though, and the report, at what point will this board kind of have a more formal discussion and talk? I I don't know that the Board of Ed has actually voted on on that report or not. Do you know, John, if they have?
They discussed it at their September second meeting. I I would guess I'd call it an informal discussion. I don't know if they they formalized anything, but actually, Tim, I was, I was gonna bring that up tonight as well in our informal discussion because I you know, I looked at the schedule and we had the joint meeting on August twenty-eighth and Board of Ed had an informal discussion on September second. And I've had a fair number of people asking me when it's gonna be on our agenda because they're following the agenda closely because they want to listen and in some cases participate. So I think we gotta get moving on it.
Yeah, I agree. A hundred, yeah, we've had a lot of conversations with the community and I've I've heard the same thing.
And I don't want to get behind the eight ball like last time there. We don't have enough time left in the calendar to do what we need to do. And I really, I still believe that this needs to be some public meetings where folks can see the plan and ask questions.
Yeah, and I also, I also would, I would, actually, I I agree with that. And I think the other side of it is, is that us having a um a discussion about it, if there are any additional questions that come up, we should probably hold off disbanding that committee until, because we may decide to ask the solution.
If I can interject too, I would agree on that as well because at the previous Board of Education meeting, uh the superintendent said that we, in a um presentation he attended with new legislation and potential changes, there may be additional state reimbursement available to towns for for school renovation and new school building. So, you know, with that discussion, it, maybe there would be, still be a need for that committee to kind of rehash how you how we deal with the state, with the state reimbursement. So it may be a good idea to hold on to that.
I know Dr. Britton was was putting numbers together on that because
David's quite a bit one month.
It may be substantially more, so. Um no, I'm fine with that as well, I, because there's still a lot more to talk about. Um we we have a couple of decisions though, so we could at our next Board of Selectment meeting, uh bring him in and have a more detailed discussion about this. Uh the meeting after, after the election, there may or may not be new people on here as well, but I think the sooner we start talking about it, the better.
I think it's especially good for the public.
More is better than less, so I think that's good. So so I will add that to the agenda next time. Yes, I will invite Dr. Britton. Maybe some of the committee members, should we want to engage in uh some.
And I don't know how to, how to do this, but I mean, you, you understand, you know, the the media approach probably better than any of us here, but I think we really need to get the word out that the meeting week after next will be discussing. It'll be on the agenda formally, we'll be discussing it. And you know, you get that, get that word out so that everybody knows if they want to come or listen in.
Absolutely. I'll make sure that everyone in town knows.
I'm sure you will.
I have to knock on the door. So, and they may do that, so. All right, that's a good idea. And again, it's, it's so much time and effort and money has been put into looking at the schools. They've been looked at a hundred different ways. And I'm looking forward to having that come to us and uh all of us talking about that, just another perspective. So, agreed. All right, um any public comment? Anything additional?
Good evening all. My name is Joe Engel, uh Two Hound Avenue. Um it's kind of a follow-up. Uh we had a discussion with Blake Farm. Um it was a really nice meeting. I think we got any uh, I guess inconsistencies just straightened out. Um we uh wish them the best, hopefully everything works out for you guys in your lease and if you guys need anything, we'll uh be there to support you as well. Um as far as our condition is concerned, I think we did find a different uh plot of town land that may be acceptable for us if it moves forward with the uh, with the board and anybody else involved, it's a plot of land down in Nolan Field. It's approximately an acre of land um that we'd be interested in farming. So I know I've spoken about it with Mike. There are some I know I've spoken about it with Mike. There are some. Details to work out as far as, uh, I guess sporting events that may happen down there, but it's a great. Spot for us. It has two gates, there's parking, um, water still may be an issue. Uh, but that may fall on us again. Um, so. Just putting it in front of the board. I don't know what, if, if this needs to be put on for next agenda as a.
Absolutely.
Formal talking point. Um, but that's, I guess, what I'm doing. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Fantastic. All right, um, informal discussion.
I got something. Jim McCabe asked me if. The board, I don't know, you may recall, we, in one of our. Updates a few months back, we talked about stormwater. Getting mixed in with our sewer water, particularly down lower Main Street, some of the. And he wanted to know if. We were doing anything about it. So I said I'd bring it up. You know, at the board meeting to say, and, you know, maybe we're the new Public Works Director. We should have him.
He, um, he's aware of the issue. Uh, Mike has filled them in, as has Ryan O'Hallbrun. On the issues we have with that. We've talked to one of our consultants that we use for sewer. Um, so it will be looked at closer, um, for us, because it is a real problem. And it needs to be done, but we finally have all the people in place to be able to do that. So, um. That'll most likely fall onto our next board to follow up with it, but. Um, I'd like to add that to the next agenda as well. I'd like to have all of us here that have been here for the last two years. Um, go through this and understand whether they're on or not, uh, the next month. So I will add that to the agenda.
Okay, then I have, uh, unfortunately, I'm not gonna be. Around, um, the next meeting. Gonna be way out of town. So I just want to say this about the schools. Um, you know, I think we need to look at, or just, I'm just throwing it out there that. With all this, these studies on schools, on our school buildings. We're still ending up the town. As a whole, we, we're still gonna be maintaining the five buildings. I don't see where we're, we're really saving ourselves a lot. Um, we might save a little bit of overhead, but not that much. And, um. I just think people should be aware of that and, and file it in the back of their minds. I mean. As a town, we're not in the real estate business. Um, we. Don't necessarily need to maintain all these buildings and maintain ownership of them because by owning them, you have to maintain. You have to keep them up. The goal of the town should be to get properties. On the tax roll so that they are producing income for the town. And that income then allows us to be more flexible with being able to add services. And spend money for the good of the people. Um, I'm not gonna be on this board that much longer. I'm gonna be seventy five. I'm getting old. It's time for some other people to step up, but I just. You know, wanna plant the seed because I started talking about these schools and why are we maintaining all these buildings when we have declining? Uh, enrollment and not as many young people in town and, um. I don't know. I think for all the studies we've made, we're, we're still gonna end up having the same five buildings that we had. So. I, I just question if that's the right path we should be following. And I'm not anti-education at all. I mean, I, I believe we need to have good schools and, um. And up to date schools, but I'm not sure we need to have five buildings. Thank you.
Yep. So I have just two corrections for you. You're getting older, but not old.
Okay.
It's a little bit different. You're all getting older, so that's okay. Uh, no, but I think you're a hundred percent right. For me, the two main factors are, um. What's the total cost gonna be? And are the numbers accurate? And will whatever happens to most likely brownstone, what is that gonna be and how is that gonna look in four years? With three years, however the plan is laid out. So we need that. It's gotta be accurate. It's gotta be real. It's gotta be, um, definitive. Uh, because it is a lot of money. Um, I know I talked about this at the last meeting. Weathersfield just passed. An eighty six or eighty three million dollar bond. The total project was like two hundred and thirty million dollars, um, to. Build a brand new school, do some other renovations, a lot of things. Um, and their citizens, their residents were convinced that it was the right thing to do. Based on all those different factors, but the, the data that they had, the information put together was crystal clear on what it is. What's it gonna cost? How is it, is the bond gonna roll in? So that I can explain it to anyone in here in thirty seconds and go, here, here's our declining bond costs right now. Here's the new ones. Here's what our tax base will be. Whatever the, the balance is. Um, explain it simply and easily. So it's believable because it's true. If we can't do that, those that are in favor of this project can't do that, then people aren't gonna vote yes. Because they'll go with whatever we're doing now versus something that might be a risk. Um, or maybe it's Mike. So accurate, real and easy to explain. And I know that's what they did in Weathersfield. Um, and. They approved it based on it made sense for them, for their needs. I think from what I've heard that our buildings. Probably need it more and are older than the buildings over there. Um, but. That's cause I think I, I bitted most of them so many, so many times over the last couple of years of this project. But either way, accurate. We need to know what to do with the school and you're right, we need to make sure that we can get it off the rolls. Um, so that someone else put a hotel there, do something else with it, but we should be getting tax money for it. So. As you, as, as usually you're right.
Well, I'm a businessman. My profession.
There you go, okay. Any other informal discussion, any other topic? All right, um, I have nothing for ethics ordinance or charter revision. Um, I'm gonna wait until the next board. Uh, members, um, were to adjourn, want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion when adjourned.
No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both stations, it passes. We are done by. Fastest meeting we're gonna have in here.